Good evening and welcome to the Village of Monroe Board of Trustees Meeting. If everyone can stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to our February 7th Board of Trustees Meeting. For the purposes of attendance, I'd just like to do a roll call. Trustee Berenger?
Berenger's present.
Trustee Ferraro?
Ferraro here.
Trustee Carl?
Carl present.
Trustee O'Connor?
O'Connor present.
And May Dwyer here. Thank you very much. Okay. First order of business is a public hearing, introduction to local law number one of 2023 to override the tax levy limit established by the general municipal law, section three dash C. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Carl will make that motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye. So carried. Public hearing is open. Brisk meeting here, well attended. We'll wait a minute and then we'll close it. Yeah, good. Yeah, it was like one thing after another. Okay, the time now is seven oh five. I'd like a motion to close the public hearing. Okay?
Berenger will make the motion.
Ferraro, a second.
Just note for the record that no one
No one from the public came forward and okay, so we had a first and a second. Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye. So carried. Thank you. Okay, we have we have these process hearings. Oh, we should, we should, we Yeah, we, yeah, yep. But I thought it was at the end of the meeting. I don't know why I thought that was.
The vote.
Oh, okay, okay, fair enough. Okay. Okay, so first order of business, a due process hearing concerning violation of property maintenance, eight four six Route seventeen M, SBL two zero one dash three dash sixteen point two two. I need a motion to open up the process hearing for that case.
Carl will make that motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye. So carried. Okay, first order of business on that. Who's running that show? Me? It's eight forty. Okay. All right, so let me, let me run through this. Due process hearing is to be held on Tuesday, February 7, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the boardroom of the Village Hall, Seventh Stage Road, Monroe, New York. The hearing is held to review the violation issued by the Village of Monroe Building Department on the following property within the Village of Monroe, eight four six Route seventeen M, tax map two oh one dash three dash sixteen point two two as per Village Code, section one five five A dash six E dash general requirements. All land must be kept free of dead and/or dying trees and accumulation of brush, shrubs, weeds, grass, stumps, roots, excessive and ignoxious growth, garbage, refuge, or debris which would either tend to start a fire or increase the intensity of a fire already started or cause poisoning or irritation to people or animals or cause or tend to cause or enhance an unhealthy and dangerous and or obnoxious situation on the said property or an adjacent or neighboring property. The specific violation is garbage, rubbish, rubbish and debris located in the western end of the parking area. Specifically, large trash bags of piled paper throughout the parking area and plastic in the trees. This is
This is Wally's.
Wally's.
I took a ride up there and a lot of it appeared to be cleaned up.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It was up there Sunday.
I didn't get a report back from the building department saying to take it off.
Yeah, we, we spoke, right? They, didn't we, or?
They sent, she said to keep it on because they were fearing that there's going to be massive trash bags, trash bags there yesterday after the weekend.
Okay. While we're talking about this, there is something that, we talked about this a while ago and then I kind of just let it go. But this business of these, these, these clothing containers, they're proliferating at the village. It's disgraceful, disgusting, and nobody's following up. And that's what it was. It wasn't trash, just as the board knows.
There was a bunch of garbage bags outside the red.
That was overloading that container. And then as far as the debris goes, he called me, the owner of that property, better than a week ago, and it was actually, he had to return it by January twenty five. And I said, well, then just clean it up, take pictures. And as far as I know, he, he did that.
He did. I looked when I drove past yesterday, I want to say.
So it's been cleaned up?
Yeah.
There's no garbage bags there at all.
Sunday.
Sunday. Today's Tuesday.
I wasn't told to take it off.
No, no, I'm with you. It's, yeah, I'm fine.
No, I, I think, look, if, if the board can attest to the fact that he's cleaned it up.
Yeah.
Then he's cleaned it up.
Can you can you reach out to the building department tomorrow and ask them?
Yeah, when we get to the end of this, we go to make a decision and we can figure that out then.
Okay, fair enough. All right, so the board concurs, it's been cleaned up. I was shocked at the plastic bag in the trees. That's a trick, right?
Well, it could have been blown up there from the, from the street.
Well, this is actually, what address is this? This is eight forty six. What is, what is the old Zuckerman property address? Eight fifty? Is that, is that on there?
That's a mess.
I'm sorry?
Still junk around that building.
Mr. Mayor, just a procedural point. You can, you can, for each one, if they are all the same, if it's all the same violation, the same section, et cetera, you can read the first one and then for the next one say it's exactly the same thing. In other words, the debris, et cetera. Yeah.
It's one fifty five A, six E. It's the same code.
Yeah.
Same code.
So just the address of the location?
Yeah, and, right.
All right, so can I, can I go with the eight forty six as in our mind, we had, we attest to the fact that it's been cleared. We'll move on to the second one.
You can do that, you know, you want to close the public hearing. Right, the, the due process hearing.
For this first account.
For the first one. No one, and note that no one appeared to object.
And then we'll do it for the second.
And then you just do it for the second one.
Okay. All right, so I need a motion to close the public hearing on this.
I'm sorry, it's a due process hearing.
Due process hearing.
Just say the hearing, it's fine.
All right.
Berenger will make the motion.
Second?
Carl, a second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye. So carried. Thank you. Next order is I need a motion to open a due process hearing on forty seven Lakes Road, tax map two eleven dash one dash one.
Carl will make that motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye. So carried. Okay, this is Roscoe's?
Yes.
One twelve Spring Street?
Yeah.
Forty seven Lakes.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's the Smith property.
Okay.
Or whatever it's
Yes, forty seven Lakes.
WC Lincoln.
And do we have, do we have pictures on it?
Yeah. Yeah, but this is specifically a pile of
I sent the board some pictures today that I took up there as well.
Specifically a pile of garbage, discarded washing machine.
Discarded dry end and discarded sofa.
Well, there's more than that up there now. There's, there's gallon containers of motor oil that are buried in dirt.
Motor oil buried in dirt?
Yes.
The DEC needs to be notified.
It's, it's partially ba, it's partially buried.
Can I see that, please? Sorry.
And those things got stuff in them.
Okay, so you need to send that.
They've got a skid unit, diesel tank there. Evidently they're fueling.
With no containment?
Well, I think that's got a containment.
Oh, I see, yeah, there is.
This is the other garbage that's laying around, wash machine. And then they're parking on the front lawn as well.
Okay, so can you send all those pictures to the clerk and then?
I can.
All right. All right, so this is the second one. I mean, everybody's seen it, everybody knows about it, everybody sees the conditions. Those are the issues that are up on the screen. It's in the report. So I need a motion to close the due process hearing.
You, you need to note, you need to ask if there's anyone here to represent the property or the owner.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public that is here to represent forty seven Lakes Road?
So let the re, let it reflect.
Do I cast a gaze to see?
Just reflect that no one spoke.
Okay. Okay, no one has come forward representing forty seven Lakes Road. Let the record note, record note that.
I just sent you pictures.
Okay.
I would also note that if the village goes, if the village cleans that up, not touch that stuff that the DEC needs to hear about.
Yeah, and secondarily, we've just been given some new pictures, which the clerk is going to pass on to the building department tomorrow. And the DEC should be notified, so we need to follow up. I need to be notified that that has, that has happened, that they know about it and that they're going to be following up.
The building department should notify the DEC, not the village.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So we, and we should have a case file issued back. So I'm looking for a case file after they've notified him.
I didn't, I did not, I just sent these to the board and the attorney and the village clerk. I did.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I did not send anything to the building department.
No, that's fine. We'll send it.
I just kind of stumbled upon it today and took, took a look around.
Okay. Okay, so having done that work and having noticed that no one has come forward to represent forty seven Lakes Road, I need a motion to close the due process hearing.
Berenger will make the motion.
Ferraro, a second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye. So carried. Next order of business is a due process hearing at one twelve Spring Street. I need a motion to open the due process hearing for one twelve Spring Street.
Carl will make that motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye. So carried. Okay, so due, due process hearing here tonight, February 7, 2023 at 7:00 PM here in the Village Hall regarding one twelve Spring Street, tax map two oh seven dash one dash twenty five. Is, it's section one five five A dash six E of the general requirements of the Village Code. Is anyone here from the public to speak on behalf of this property owner? Again, cast, cast my eyes?
You cast your eyes.
Okay. Okay, and you know what I'd like to do if we could, obviously not tonight, but whatever this situation, you know, with the HDMI and all that? If there's a way to get it to her side so that she Oh, there is? Oh, oh. The big one will. The long one will. Okay, good, thanks. So going forward, that's what we'll do. Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Again, same thing. Garbage, rubbish, debris, littering throughout the property. Okay, having no one come forward for one twelve Spring Street, I need a motion to close the due process hearing.
Carl will make that motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye. So carried. Okay, next order of business is a due process hearing for seventy four Milpon Parkway. SBL is two oh seven dash one dash eleven. Building Department has noticed that the property within the Village of Monroe at seventy four Milpon Parkway, tax map two oh seven dash one dash eleven, has been noted with the violation of code one five five A dash six E specifically rubbish and debris, garbage and/or other materials that are not, that are in direct violation of this ordinance. Is anyone from the public here to speak on this behalf of seventy four Milpon Parkway?
Mayor, they were in there today cleaning up and apparently the contractors that were there thought it was a good idea to pile all the wooden debris up and burn it. And the fire department was there. But they were cleaning it up. I don't know how, if it's to the building inspector's satisfaction, but a lot of messes cleaned up. It was a recliner, a couch, a deep fryer. There's a taco truck parked there now that, I don't know, right next to the dumpster.
Right, yeah, there is.
But they were, they were, like I said, they were cleaning limbs up and they decided to burn them and
You know the contractor that was used?
No, I do not know who was it. The village police were there. They're the ones that called for us.
Okay.
So they would, I'm sure they would have.
Okay, well, I've been in touch with the owner of the plaza on another matter and he said that I have his full attention. That was pretty interesting, right?
So I think for these, these properties where they have been cleaned up or they may have been cleaned up, as, when we get down to the taking action part, I think you would table them
Yeah.
till the next meeting and you would hear from the building department. But the due process hearing is done. So if they're not cleaned up by the next meeting, you can go ahead and resolve it.
Okay. All right, so if no one's here from seventy four Milpon Parkway, I'd like a motion to close this due process hearing.
Berenger will make the motion.
Second?
Ferraro, a second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye. So carried. Thank you. Okay, next order of business is the approval of the meeting minutes submitted by the clerk for the January seventeenth board meeting. I need a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
Carl will make that motion.
O'Connor will second.
Discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, Epstein.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye. Thank you so much. Okay. Next order of business is, I don't see, okay, very good. Yep, no, I was looking for some other, something else. Okay, next order of business, the appointment of full-time DPW laborer, Jason Abrinsky. Let's take a look at that a second. Okay, following, resolve the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of working leader Aldo Chiapetta and appoints Jason Abrinsky of Sixth Woodland Road, Monroe, New York, to the position of full-time laborer for the Department of Public Works. Mrs. Abrinsky has been pre-approved by the Orange County Department of Human Resources. The effective date of hire is February 8, 2023 at the following rate of pay, at the following rate of pay and increases as per the IBW contract, so twenty nine oh seven per hour at the completion of six months of service. That will run to thirty dollars and seven cents per hour and after one year completion, it'll run to thirty one dollars and seven cents per hour. I need a motion to accept the recommendation of working leader Aldo Chiapetta and
Ferraro will make the motion.
Carl will second that.
Okay, any discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye. So carried. Next order of business. I'm going to pick up right here, Mr. Federici. One second, let me just go right through it. I don't know why that, that probably could have went together. Let's see. Okay. Resolve the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of working leader Aldo Chiapetta and appoint Vincent Federici, seven Decade, seventeen Decade Drive, Washingtonville, New York, one oh nine nine two, to the position of full-time laborer of the Village Monroe Department of Public Works. Mr. Federici has been pre-approved the Orange County Department of Human Resources. Effective date of hire is February twenty one, 2023, at the following rate of pay rate and increases as per the IBW contract, twenty nine oh seven per hour, completion of six months, it's thirty dollars and seven cents per hour and after one year completed service, thirty one dollars and seven cents per hour. I need a motion to accept the recommendation of working leader Aldo Chiapetta.
Carl will make that motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye. So carried. Both of you gentlemen, congratulations and welcome aboard.
Get to work.
Okay. Truck's outside running. Okay, next order of business. Resolve the Board of Trustees approves the appointment of Nicholas Amanti, sixteen Victoria Drive, Bloom Grove, New York, one oh nine one four, to position of seasonal laborer. Preapproval of this appointment has been received in the Orange County Department of Civil Service with an effective date of February twenty one, 2023 at a rate of eighteen dollars per hour. I need a motion to accept the recommendation of Aldo Chiapetta.
Berenger will make the motion.
Carl will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye. So carried. Thank you.
Is he working now or?
He actually works with his uncle now, his father?
His father right now.
Yeah. And he goes to school at night.
He goes to school at night.
Which is pretty cool. Yeah.
But did he, this past summer, did he work there? Was he here this past?
No, that was Christopher.
Oh, okay.
Christopher's going into the Navy.
Uh, yeah, Navy nurse or something, or he's going to school for nursing and into the Navy.
So we have a trend. We, we, we kill them in seasonal work and then we send them off to the Navy. So, Jason, what are you doing here? Looks to be in the Navy right now. Okay, awesome. So we got that done. That's great. I appreciate all the work behind that and I look forward to seeing you both out there as representing the Village of Monroe. It's big business and it's good business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next order of business. If they'd like, gentlemen, if you'd like, you could stay or if you'd like to go, you're welcome to go. I know, Al, you're trying to finish up a water leak cleanup.
You can go if you want.
Yeah, I'm going to go.
They can go too.
They don't have to stay if they don't want to.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks. Bye-bye. Kim, do you have anything for them? Okay, very good. Thank you. Thanks, gentlemen. Have a great night.
Got to sell the surplus equipment.
Something I want to see first.
Oh. It's the State of the Union.
Next order of business is sale of surplus PD equipment. Trustee Berenger.
Okay. I got a memo from Chief Guzman, whereas in accordance with the state law requiring that equipment no longer needed by the municipality be sold at far, fair market value and whereas the following police department equipment is hereby declared surplus to the needs of the village. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of Chief Guzman that the following vehicles be placed for sale through Auction International and sold to the highest bidder. Removal from inventory shall be made following the sale. Two thousand one Ford Econo line VIN number one F T S E three four L seven one H A four nine three two seven, current mileage one hundred thirty thousand miles. Two thousand six Pontiac Montana VIN number one G M D V three three L seven six D one five six zero two six, current mileage one hundred nineteen thousand miles. I'd like to put this in the form of a motion.
Second, please.
Ferraro, a second.
Any discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Barely broken in.
Okay, next order of business, trustee Berenger, again, completion of probation for Officer Beach.
Be it resolved, police officer Brian Beach has completed his probation and in accordance with Orange County Civil Service rules, the Board of Trustees approves his permanent appointment effective January twenty ninth, two thousand twenty three. The necessary MSD dash four two six will be submitted to Orange County Department of Human Services. I'd like to put this in the form of a motion.
Second, please.
Ferraro, a second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye. So carried. Thank you. Next order of business is the resolution to appoint Monroe Joint Parks and Recreation Commission Pastor Uba Ubuyameni. Uyameni, trustee Berenger.
Okay. Be it resolved, the Board of Trustees appoints resident Pastor Uba Ubiyameni seventy eight Frederick Drive, Monroe, New York, as a commissioner to the Monroe Joint Parks and Recreation Commission, fulfilling a vacant term February eighth, two thousand twenty three to December thirty first, two thousand twenty eight. I'd like to put this in the form of a motion.
Second, please.
Carl will second that.
Question? Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye. So carried. Thank you. Next order of business is the appointment of zoning Board of Appeals alternate ZBA member, Linseer, trustee Farrar.
Resolve the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of Mayor Neil Dwyer and appoint Linseer, twelve Alexis Smith Avenue, Monroe, to the zoning Board of Appeals to fill one of the two vacant alternative positions that currently exist on the ZBA. Ms. Zier is appointed to the zoning Board of Appeals for a five-year term, fulfilling the unexpired term of Elizabeth Doherty, expiring March thirty first, twenty twenty six, and I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, second, please.
Berenger will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye. So carried. Thank you. Next order of business, the adoption of local law number one of 2023 to override the tax levy limit. Whereas the village board of the Village of Monroe, New York duly noticed the public hearing on February seven, 2023, and whereas the village board solicited public comment during said public hearing on February seven, 2023, and whereas the purpose of the local law to authorize the village board to override the limit on the amount of real property taxes that may be levied by the village and to further allow the village board to adopt a budget for the fiscal year commencing on June one, 2023 that requires the village property tax levy in excess of the tax levy limit in accordance with General Municipal Law three dash C. Now therefore be resolved that the whereas paragraphs are incorporated herein by reference to the local law authorizing a property tax levy in excess at the limit established in General Municipal Law three C is attached here to as Schedule A, being hereby adopted as local law of twenty twenty three, right? It should say twenty three, right? It says twenty two.
No, it says right here, twenty two.
No, it says twenty two.
In this packet, I'm looking at local law number one.
It says twenty two, don't mind.
Oh, here, I know what you're saying.
In the text.
The text.
What I'm reading.
Twenty two.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
The text is twenty two.
Okay, thanks. The village board hereby directs the village clerk to take all steps to process and file said local law. The resolution shall take effect immediately.
You don't have to read the local law.
So I need a motion to adopt the local law number one of 2023 to override tax levy limit. Can I get a motion?
Carl will make the motion.
Second, please.
Berenger will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye. So carried. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Next order of business, event application, Independence Day, twenty twenty three. Cut and paste, baby. Cut and paste. Trustee Carl?
I'm looking at the paper here. That's why I'm
Yep. A resolve, the Board of Trustees approve the event application submitted by Mayor Dwyer to host the village's annual Independence Day celebration on Sunday, July second, twenty twenty three, from four PM to eleven PM, with a rain date scheduled for Monday, July third, twenty twenty three. Emergency services along with Marshal LaSterly and the village's insurance carrier will be notified. Sign off that the event application has been made by the DPW Building Inspector and Police Department. The Police Department will provide police officers to shut down roadways, assist with traffic control points and crowd control. The estimate, estimated cost for the additional police service is six thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars and I will put that into a form of a motion.
Can I get a second, please?
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye. I'm sorry.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye. So carried. Thank you. So this is a great opportunity that maybe we'll have a chance to catch up with right here. Trustee Carl, once again, right there. Okay, so authorization assigned to twenty twenty three Independence Day Garden State Fireworks. Trustee Carl.
Yes. Resolve the Board of Trustees approve a contract with Garden State Fireworks, Post Office Box four zero three, Mellington, New Jersey, zero seven nine four six, for furnishing and, and conducting a firework display on Sunday, July second, rain date of Monday, July third, in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Fifty percent deposit of ten thousand due at signing of contract, ten thousand due immediately following the display. If there should be a postponement of said display to July third, the event, in the event of inclement weather, an additional, that's, it'll be an additional eight hundred dollars will be added. But he's willing to work on, work on that with us. So I think that's, just so the board's aware.
Sure.
So I would like to put that in the form of a motion to go with Garden State and then I can discuss a little more under discussion.
So I got a first, a second?
O'Connor will second.
Okay, discussion?
Yes, um, we did, I did reach out to the vendor that, uh, that I've used for many years here in Monroe, back in the fire department days in nineteen ninety-eight. Um, we just did a little looking around, and, um, we did find this Garden State vendor with a lot bigger show. So basically, we're gonna get a big bang for our buck here
That's good.
So to speak.
Yeah.
Their, their show was, uh, a lot more elaborate than what we've been getting in the past, so we should see a big, big improvement with it, and, you know, we, like I say, we use Legion for many years here, they've been good to us, um, but.
Sometimes you need to change and check it out.
You know, change and see what, what other people got out there, and then we can get the feedback from the, uh, we can get the feedback from the folks after the fireworks, um, but, um, he, uh, I told him I'd give him a call tomorrow to let him know how this went tonight, and, um.
Garden State.
Garden State.
Yeah.
Now, also, he said, if we don't, if we have back-to-back rainouts, he cannot do the Fourth of July. And we, I said, that's fine, that'll be something the board will have to deal with, and one of the things I was talking to the mayor about is the possibility of the Community Day in August. Doing it after that, but, uh,
Yeah.
let's, let's hope.
Cross our fingers.
Yeah, I think we'll be good.
But, um, but, uh, the gentleman's, you know, Augie is willing to work with us, and, um, I think, I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna see a big, uh, big surprise here.
Good, good job. Uh, I'm gonna ask the clerk tomorrow to write a letter advising Legion. All right? Uh, thank them for, you know, uh, the opportunity, uh, to be of service to us, but that we're moving in a different direction, and, uh, you know, we'd like to, uh, keep in touch, kind of thing. Okay, so, thank you. Okay, so, uh, we did a first and second, call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Wyre, aye, so Carrie. Good. Next order of business is the event application, Village of Monroe Summer Carnival, two thousand twenty-three. Trustee O'Connor.
All right. Resolved, the Board of Trustees approve the event application submitted by Mayor Dwyer for the annual vigil, Village of Monroe Summer Carnival, two thousand twenty-three, to be held in the North Field of Crane Park from Thursday, July twenty-seventh to Sunday, July thirtieth. Hours of the carnival are as follows, July twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth from six to eleven, and the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth from two PM to eleven PM. Emergency services and Marshal and Sterling will be copied on the approval letter. Sign off on the event application has been made by the DPW Building Department and Police Department. The Police Department will oversee the event with two police officers for event security and traffic assistance at an estimated cost of three thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars for additional police services. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Second please.
Carl will second.
Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Wyre, aye, so Carrie. Next order of business, trustee O'Connor, the authorization to sign the two thousand twenty-three Ace Tent Amusement Company, uh, agreement.
Okay, the Board of Trustees has, um, been presented with a contract from Ace Tent Amusement Corp., fifty-nine West Moreland Drive, Yonkers, New York, one zero seven zero four, for the village's annual two thousand twenty-three carnival. The dates of the event are Thursday, July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, through Sunday, July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. The agreement states that there will be fourteen to sixteen rides furnished by Ace Tent Amusement, with ticket prices ranging as follows. A dollar twenty-five per ticket, twenty tickets for twenty dollars, forty-five tickets for forty-five dollars, twenty-five dollar band per night for unlimited rides. Ace Tent Amusement will supply one hundred posters promoting the event, as well as three banners printed with information provided by the committee. Additionally, there will be a hundred dollars per game donated to the Village of Monroe, and Ace Tent Amusement will supply the Village of Monroe with forty percent of gross receipts. Ace Tent Amusement also will include the following food, trailers, cotton candy, ice cream, funnel cake, and suppose hot dogs, hamburgers, and sausage and peppers. Ace Tent Amusement will also provide a five million dollar insurance policy, naming Village of Monroe as additionally insured, as well as a copy of proof of workman's compensation. Ace Tent Amusement will also provide four portions and one ADA compliant partisan, as well as contribute forty-six hundred dollars towards security for the event. Uh, be it resolved, the Board of Trustees approves the two thousand twenty-three contract, an agreement provided by Ace Tent Amusement for the annual Village of Monroe Carnival to be held in Crane Park, July twenty-seventh, twenty-three, through the thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Mayor Dwyer is authorized to sign the contract. And I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Can I get a second, please?
Carl will second then.
Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Wyre, aye. Just to, uh, point your reference, so, uh, I do remember, like, in the past, we've had four thousand and change on the coverage, uh, the, the, the reimbursement, she's cut me, but I see on the police side of this event, it's only thirty-nine hundred? Is that?
That's what they told me.
That's what they told you?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, so I'm saying, yeah, yeah, okay, just want to be sure, okay. Thank you. Okay, next order of business is the, uh, Still Road Hydrant and Line Valve Replacement, trustee Carl.
Yes, uh, thank you. Um, resolved, the Board of Trustees authorized the Water Department to replace a fire hydrant and an eight-inch inline valve in the vicinity of Still Road and Pope Lane. The hydrant was broken during a house fire at thirty-seven Still Road. Total estimated cost of replacement is fourteen thousand dollars to be allocated from Budget Line F eighty-three forty point forty-five forty, distribution, general, maintenance. And I will put that in the form of a motion.
Second please.
O'Connor will second.
Just some quick discussion, I have had some conversation with, um, Ernie. He wants to try to do this on a Friday evening, um, I told him he's gotta be careful with, especially with the Tequila Grill, that we don't go turning the water off at six, seven o'clock at night, so we gotta, we gotta kind of time that and, and check with Rob up there. So he was going to, uh, take care of that, but he was gonna try to do this during the nighttime.
Is there a night they're closed? Probably not. Yeah. They're open every night, I'm thinking, right?
Well, if we just let them know they're gonna start turning water off at ten o'clock at night, at least that gets his dinner crowd out.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, uh, next order of business. Sorry, we didn't go finish up order. So we have a first and a second? Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Wyre, aye, so Carrie, thank you. Next order of business, the authorization to sign the Burke Group, uh, for Gatsby seventy-five service agreement, which is part of our, uh, financial obligation to oversee and, and to make sure it's all, you know, in line and, and correct. Resolved, the Board of Trustees authorized Mayor Dwyer to sign an agreement with Burke Group, eight eighty Linden Oaks Drive, uh, Suite two ten, Rochester, New York, one four six two five, for actuarial services to be rendered for the Village of Monroe regarding Gatsby seventy-five valuation services for their post-retirement healthcare plans through May thirty-one, two thousand twenty-six, to be allocated from Budget Line A thirty-one twenty point four five zero zero, order the contractual. I need a motion to, um, authorize the, uh, signature.
Ferraro will make the motion.
Second?
Barringer will second.
Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Wyre, aye, so Carrie, thank you. Next order of business is the event application for the two thousand twenty-three Summer of Monroe Summer Concert Series. Resolved, the Board of Trustees approve the event application submitted by Mayor Dwyer for the two thousand twenty-three Summer Concert Series to be held in the north side of Lake Street between the Mill Ponds on the following days, June ten and twenty-four, July two, eight, fifteen and twenty-two, August five, twelve and nineteen. Concert begins at seven and ends approximately eight-thirty PM. In the case of rain, it'll be held the following day, which is a Sunday beginning at seven PM. Emergency services and Marshal and Sterling will be copied on the approval letter. Sign off on the event application has been made by the DPW Building Department and Police Department. The Police Department will provide police officers to shut down Lake Street and provide secu- uh, event security on each concert date with an estimated cost of one thousand eight hundred and ninety for additional police services. I need a motion to authorize the mayor to sign, uh, to approve, I'm sorry, um, yeah, for the village to approve the event. Not the mayor to sign anything.
Carl will make that motion.
Second please.
O'Connor will second.
Just a quick discussion, we're not, are we, uh, we're not doing any, um, food trucks and stuff for that, right?
No, not that I'm aware of, no.
All right, and then, in that, which one is gonna be our, uh, our community barbecue?
Nineteenth.
The nineteenth?
Yeah.
August nineteenth?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, uh, Monroe's Got Talent is gonna be June.
First, the tenth?
Yes, thank you. Those are the two key ones. And, uh, regarding, uh, what you just said about the vendors, that Community Day, we're really gonna push tomorrow to say to, like the Presbyterians, I know you like to barbecue on your lawn, but it'd be nice to come out here and make your chicken dinners. You know, it would be really nice to have more involvement from the community, that's what this is about.
Yeah.
So, if you got any great ideas, or you wanna do any reaching out, or any, by all means, go for it, you know, the fire company comes out and does their thing, which is well received, and, but it'd be nice to have the whole community be part of this, at some level. Right? So I don't know if it's a letter that we send out, I know in the past we have, uh, the clerk has done like a bunch of letters, actually, right?
Yeah, Kim, we, I worked with Kim last, last year on it, actually the last two years, but it, um, you know, we, we've sent out to the organizations, tried to get them involved, and then we get the food trucks, and I'm like, we really don't want the food trucks, you know, the jerk chicken, they come and they set a table up. Uh, the other gentleman, that other barbecue guy, he, you know.
He was willing though, but wasn't he willing to do something for us?
Yes, he was.
Right, yeah.
Well, I'm just thinking, so we have, we have the fireworks, then we have the community barbecue, and then possibly if we do Cheese Festival. So are we trying to get all local-owned, community?
No, Cheese Fest, no, you can't, you can't.
Cheese Fest is pretty much open to whoever.
Open season.
Okay.
But the community thing, I thought Debbie would be appropriate to have local nonprofits, churches, organizations, lion clubs, anybody doing their thing.
Yep.
I mean, we, we came out that year, last year, and we did slushies and pretzels, and,
Right.
you know, I think they just need to really be incentivized to figure out how to do that, and I think we really.
Maybe.
I mean, the fish, the fish will be high atop of the water, they're listening to the concert.
For the concerts, hopefully we bring back the jump houses that keep the kids busy, so the parents can enjoy their concerts. That would be nice. Also, would we consider, um, uh, beer and wine areas as, uh,
If it can, if it can happen, I mean, I, we, we were giving that up to Christine O'Toole, to give the, the lowdown on that. In our marketing meeting, we had a little side conversation, and, uh, her and Tyler seem to be in different camps as to what SLA will do, but I have no problem doing it.
I think Crane Park, you gotta, you gotta check on the deed restrictions of Crane Park, 'cause I don't believe you're allowed to sell alcohol in there.
Oh, really?
What, did we say sell, is it sell it?
Well, it would.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Because I, I go back years ago, the Italian, when the Italian American Club had their feast in there.
Yeah.
They weren't allowed to sell alcohol, and they were selling it across the street, in the, in the lot between the Sunoco and the beer and soda. When the fire come, and we used to do our carnival up there before, you know, the Monroe Improvement Society took us to, everybody to court. Um, we were not allowed to serve alcohol in there, 'cause it was in the deed restrictions. According to the Monroe Pro- I've never seen it.
Where's, where's the line for where Crane Park ends? Like, in other words, if we were to look at a map of what's considered Crane Park, so.
Technically, Airplane Park is even in Crane Park.
Right, and then where does it end, like at Lake Street?
No, 'cause all the way around the ponds.
Okay.
It's all part of Crane Park, where the nine eleven memorial is, that's all part of Crane Park.
So that's something we need to look into, then.
I have never seen it, but I, I do know that we were not allowed to sell it, and it was brought up that it was in the deeds.
All right, so we need to look at that, okay?
Okay.
Yep.
We're good, Andy, on that?
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate that. Okay, so, um, circling back, uh, yeah, so lots of great ideas, uh, I think we really need to explore them, it's, it's February seventh.
Be here before you know it, yeah.
Before you know it, exactly.
I mean, the concerts, you know, I think the concerts are very popular, and, and, and sliding that stage like, like we did last year and put it in the back,
Yeah, it was a big hit.
I think it just makes it a lot better.
Yeah. No, I think it's a, it's a, it's a much better, I think it's a much better look.
And you're getting, you're getting, you're getting good crowns, so.
Yeah.
Something to capitalize, and again, it's, it's the downtown eateries and stuff are the ones that really should be, you know, stepping up and saying, hey, you know, and, and run your dinner specials and stuff, so you get the people, or takeouts.
Right.
That's, that's where they could capitalize, yeah.
Well, I think you even said, didn't you say, uh, you thought that they should have somebody bust down?
Run, run it back and forth, as if they were delivering, deliver it to the park. From their sort of.
Like a door dash, but you walk, walk dash, like you could bring a wagon or something.
Place your order, and then just.
Well, that's what a lot of the, if you were to go to a brewery and they have a, um, food truck, a lot of times that's what happens.
Yeah.
I'm not saying a food truck, but you order your food, and then when it's ready, yeah, I mean, it's such a short walk.
Yeah. Okay, uh, let's see, what did we do? Uh, did we do the first, second, and, uh, we didn't, we didn't call a question, did we? On these days, right?
Actually, just call a question.
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Wyre, aye, so Carrie. Uh, next order of business, uh, authorization for the boardroom camera system, uh, trustee Farraro.
Trustee Farraro obtained three proposals for an updated audiovisual camera system for the boardroom in Village Hall. Metro Sound Pros of Monroe propose an amount of ten thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Hudson Valley Audi- Hudson Valley Audio and Visual of Medina proposed an amount of eleven thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Andrew Ruiz Productions of Monroe, uh, propose an amount of seven thousand two hundred nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. Resolved, the Board of Trustees authorizes the purchase of an updated audiovisual camera system for the Village Hall Boardroom from Andrew Ruiz Productions in the amount of seven thousand two hundred nine dollars and ninety-eight cents to allocate it from Budget Line A one six two zero dot two two zero zero, Village Hall Office Equipment, and I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Second please.
Barringer will second.
Andy, just have a second, if you wouldn't mind just sharing with the board?
Yes.
Yeah.
Anything in particular?
Just about, just about.
Well, this, this system, without a doubt, uh, brings us at least into the twentieth century, and what it'll do is, um, uh, the camera will be able to, uh, beam or stream our meetings live uh, to our, our, our Facebook and, and to our, um, uh, other, um,
Platforms.
Platforms, um, try, well, YouTube, but I can't think of that third one, I always forget it. Anyway. Huh? Instagram. And so, uh, simultaneously, while recording it and storing it, uh, both, uh, in the cloud and in, uh, locally.
And the cloud covered, we're covered with the cloud.
Yeah, we're covered with the cloud. So it'll all be done automatically, and the best part, right now, we're just starting with one camera. We will be able to expand it to multiple cameras, as many as needed, um, so it'll be, uh, a, a step in the right direction.
Good.
And it still utilizes a lot of equipment that we have here, especially our audio portion of it. So this is, uh, updating our video portion.
And I think you also said that this is getting, uh.
Oh, this will be, oh, this equipment back here gets reduced, a lot of it is no longer be necessary. So we'll end up getting, we won't rewire all of our microphones, that would be a big expense for no reason, but it'll be greatly, the footprint will be greatly reduced back here.
Good.
I'm gonna miss that, I got that when I was mayor. Well, you can have it when we're done.
And the camera. Okay, well, thank you, thank you very much, good work, appreciate it. Okay, so, um, we, uh, did a first and a second?
No, I don't think we did that part yet. Okay. Okay.
Yep, uh, yep, call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Wyre, aye, so Carrie. And you'll, uh, you'll let him know and get everything put together, right? Yeah, okay.
Contact them tomorrow.
Okay, cool.
Let them know.
Are we gonna start looking at, um, doing like the planning board meetings?
Well, it, it'll be able to do that, and what's really great, and I forgot to bring this up before, but it, yeah, not only can it be done here, but it could be done remotely. So if nobody, whoever's running it doesn't wanna come to a planning board meeting or a ZBA meeting can remotely activate the camera and start the streaming, so you could watch it from home.
Cool, right?
Yeah, I'm really excited about that.
Yeah. Because they need to be online.
And what I'll do is, uh, our, um, uh, our, our account online, uh, what I'll be able to do, I'll segment it so that the Village Board Meetings will be in one folder, ZBA will be in another, Planning Board will be in another. So people who just want a ZBA can, won't have to scroll through all of them.
Good, thank you very much. Okay, uh, next order of business is Village Monroe Board of Trustees. Resolution concerning violations of property maintenance to eight forty-six Route seventeen M, SBL two oh one dash three dash six point two two. So, uh, we had this in a due process hearing earlier. This is Wally's Ice Cream. Uh, the board has all spoken about the condition that they found it in as of, uh, recent, as Sunday. And, uh, we don't see the same thing that might have occurred, or condition that was there existing pre. Uh, so based upon that, I don't think the board, uh, would like to make any rendering of any violation or substantiate anything. Yeah, so I think what we wanna do at this point is go ahead and, uh, table this, uh, this, uh, violation after we've had a conversation with the Village Building Inspector. Uh, the only question I have, when we table it and we give it to the building inspector, what are we expecting in return from him?
He is going to tell you whether it's been cleaned up.
Okay.
The inspector can give you a report on the condition of the property.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fair, okay.
And then you can take action at the next meeting, either just say, no, it's been cleaned up, or it hasn't.
Okay.
But, but it would be good to hear from your building inspector.
Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, so, uh, that's tabled. Uh, next one is the Village Monroe Board of Trustees Resolution Concerning Violation of Property Maintenance to Forty-seven Lakes Road, SBL two eleven dash one dash one. Again, uh, this applicant, or not applicant, this, uh, property owner, uh, has a violation. We've seen the photographs, and, uh, I think at this time, we need to reach out to the building inspector to see and substantiate the conditions as of tomorrow morning, uh, and then see if this is something we wanna continue, uh, at the next board meeting.
So there's been some cleaning up of that property as well?
No.
No?
No.
Then, then you don't need to, you can take action tonight.
Okay.
You've closed the public hearing.
That's the one, um.
That's Roscoe Smith.
That's, and you said, go.
What did you say?
It's got the, the jugs of oil that are half, half buried. I picked them up there.
Is there a way we can put a chain to not let people on this property?
No, it, it may, most likely, it may be the actual property owner, we don't know. We don't know who's doing it, but he should be as concerned as we are.
Mm-hmm.
So I think what we wanna do is we wanna, uh, have the building inspector be notified that there is oil and there is, uh, uh.
They're in sealed containers, but there's, there's oil there.
And that, that should be inspected, and, uh, let us know if there's going to be a case opened up with the DEC.
Oh, I have like four, you want me to send them to you?
I think they're, they're. They group together.
So in this case, you would go ahead, and I don't think you need to go through the whole resolution, but you would drop down to, you know, there's been a public hea-, uh, a due process hearing, no one appeared, there's a lot of discussion on the record. So you would resolve to have the village clerk mail a certified copy of the resolution to the property owner. And then you would resolve to have it cleaned up. That last paragraph, right?
To be further resolved? Okay, so the property owner, so above it, where whereas the property owner has been given proper and lawful notice of said violation, and have been directed to correct the violation. It's not necessary.
I'm sorry, violation remains uncorrected. I'm sorry, what are you reading?
Okay, so.
Getting buzzed on my phone because John Carl keeps sending me stuff.
Okay, so, uh, if you go down, you go down to the third paragraph, it says whereas long standing violations, blah, blah, blah.
Sorry about that.
When you go to the fourth one, is it whereas?
Yeah, go right down to, um, go right down to be it further resolved. In other words, um, I don't think you need to read this whole resolution in the record.
Okay. Be it further resolved, any violation that remains uncorrected on the property as of today, February seventh, twenty twenty-three. The Board of Trustees hereby authorize the Village, its contractors or agents, to enter upon the property to correct the aforementioned violation. And that all costs incurred by the Village, including administrative, legal, and corrective costs, be charged to the property owner. And such charge shall be added to tax bill of the Village of the property owner, if not paid within thirty days of notification to the last known address of the property owner as shown on the Village tax records. So I need a motion.
Carl will make that motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Do I, aye?
So now, once, just, just to summarize this, once the, uh, the building inspector inspects the property and the condition is the same or worse, worse, are we going to go in there and clean it up?
Actually, we usually just send, if, if you're using the highway department, just as an example. If you're sending a highway department out there to clean it up, if they go out there and they see it clean, they come back and they tell me if it was cleaned already. And then the building department goes and verifies it, because at this point, as of today, this stuff is still there.
Yeah, and the only thing you don't want your DPW to do is start cleaning up oil. Just leave that.
But I do want.
You don't wanna touch that.
Right, I do want a notice to go out there and let them know that there is solvent and or oils and or petroleum products. First thing tomorrow morning. Secondarily, you're gonna let them know that the board has authorized the cleanup to happen.
Because I don't think you want that to linger, because if somebody sees something, they're gonna throw something in, it's just gonna get.
Worse and worse. Okay, we did a motion, did a second, call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Do I, aye, so carry. Next order of business is the property at one twelve Spring Street. Again, uh, be it further resolved, any violation that remains uncorrected on the property as of February seventh, twenty twenty-three. The Bo-, the Board of Trustees hereby authorize the Village, its contractors or agents, to enter upon the property to correct the aforementioned violation. That all costs incurred by the Village, including administrative, legal, and corrective costs, be charged to the property owner. And such charge shall be added to the tax bill of the property owner, if not paid within thirty days of notification to the last known address of the property owner, as shown on the Village tax records. I need a motion?
Carl will make that motion.
O'Connor will second.
Discussion, call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Do I, aye? So counsel, here's my question. So this fellow tomorrow morning is going to get notified by whom?
The clerk sends a certified copy of the resolution.
To the property owner?
Yes, by certified mail. So, and they may go right out and clean it up, or you might have a DPW there.
I'm sorry, it's right above it, I didn't see that, so I'm reading down here, so it's right above it, that the village clerk mailed a certified copy.
Right.
Yeah, I'm gonna, just because I, Evelyn Wood, I'm gonna do the whole thing this time, because I, I just, I don't know.
Yeah, there's a lot of people know about Evelyn Wood.
Yeah, seventy-four Mill Pond Parkway, uh, same thing, we had a, a due process hearing, and, uh, to my understanding, uh, same thing, uh, where is that again, seventy-four? Oh, right, right.
Taco truck.
Okay.
Yeah.
So whereas, uh.
Just read the two.
That looks like it's being cleaned up.
Yeah, yeah, they cleaned a lot of that up today, that's the one where they, they burned the brush today.
Well, is this another one that you'll table until you talk?
Alright, so whereas the Board of Trustees authorized, persuade the section one five five A, A eight of the new property maintenance laws to authorize the Village undertake to remedy such violation of the property at the owner's cost and expense. Be it further resolved, the village clerk mail a certified copy of the resolution be mailed to the property owner via certified mail. Be it further resolved, any violation that remains uncorrected on the property as of February seventh, twenty twenty-three. The Board of Trustees hereby authorize the Village's contracts or agents to enter upon the property to correct the aforementioned violation. At all costs incurred by the Village, including administrative, legal, and corrective costs, be charged to the property owner. And such charge shall be added to the tax bill of the property owner, if not paid within thirty days of notification to the last known address of the property owner, as shown on the Village tax map. I need a motion.
Barringer will make the motion.
Carl, a second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Do I, aye, so carry. Which is that?
Wally's.
That, that was tabled.
In other words, do you wanna do the same thing that you've done with the others, and go ahead and issue the order to clean it up? And then if the building, if DPW goes out there.
Who is that, and which one is that?
The Wally's.
The Wally's.
Wally's.
Instead of tabling it?
Instead of tabling it, because then we know these, I mean, these are.
You wanna do that?
Yeah, let me go back.
Alright, we'll redo that one.
Okay. Uh, this is the, uh, eight forty-six seventeen M, uh, SBL two zero one dash three dash sixteen point two two. Uh, be it further resolved, the village clerk shall mail a certified copy of the resolution, uh, be mailed to the property owner via certified mail. Be it further resolved, any violation that remains uncorrected on the property as of February seventh, twenty twenty-three. The Board of Trustees hereby authorize the Village, its contractor or agents, to enter upon the property to correct the aforementioned violation. At all costs incurred by the Village, including administrative, legal, and corrective costs, be charged to the property owner. And such charge shall be added to the tax bill of the property owner, if not paid within thirty days of the notification to the last known address of the property owner, as shown on the Village tax records. So I need a motion to, uh, send a letter and to notify, uh, the, uh, owner.
Carl will make that motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Do I, aye, so carry. Uh, I don't think I have anything. Do I? Okay, my clerk is going to bring me up to speed, what am I missing in? Yes, okay. Uh, this is all executive, though, is it?
Huh? No, 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 remember the, the water? You know, the water, the, um, the, the money that we're giving for the leak detection?
Oh, okay, sorry.
It's the, your email in there.
Standby. I apologize, Kim. Yeah, it's gonna take a lot to trigger. I'm sorry. Oh, this here? Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, um, so, um, Orange County, um, has, uh, the Orange County Water Authority, uh, reached out and they were offering, uh, grant opportunities for people to, uh, municipalities to go out and do their, uh, check their systems for leaks.
Leak detection.
Uh, so, uh, I wrote the grant, uh, the board, the village, wrote the grant. And I got a letter the other day from them advising us that, uh, the, uh, they've awarded us the grant, uh, so they're gonna check our entire system for leaks.
Nice.
Yeah, at no cost to the village.
Great.
So that's really cool. Uh, I'll just read what they said, uh, to the board. Uh, okay, uh, to May Dwyer, uh, blah, blah, blah. The Orange County Water Authority, OCWA, with the support of the Orange County Legislature, set aside funds to, and once again, offer municipal water supply leak detection services. The Board of Directors, uh, reviewed your application for these services to survey forty-three miles of your system. At no cost to you, we are pleased to confirm your application has been approved. So that's a great news for the Village and the viewers at home, uh, who are waiting with bated breath on this. This is good. These are, these are, these are necessary and important works that are not going to impact the taxpayer, which is great, and we appreciate it. Through a competitive process, the Board of Directors awarded the contract to Upstate Leak Detection LLC of Hastings, New York on January tenth, twenty twenty-three, to perform this work on behalf. Their staff will be contacting us shortly to coordinate, uh, this work. Uh, they further said, we look forward to assisting you this year, and if you have any questions or concerns at any time, please feel free to contact us at. So this is big news, great news, and, uh, we're all really happy about it, so. So thank you on that, and thank you, uh, uh, clerk, clerk Zara. Okay, very good. Uh, everything else I have, I believe, is for attorney-client, for personnel and executive, uh, vice of counsel. Uh, trustee Barringer, you have anything?
I was just gonna remind, uh, everyone to continue to support our local restaurants and, uh, shops. I know we just had a ribbon cutting the other day at Jay's Seafood, which was pretty exciting. Um, that was, that's pretty much it.
Does Ferraro anything?
Nope, nothing.
What'd you call?
Hey, just a couple of real quick things. Uh, our third quarter water billing, uh, went out. Took in four hundred twenty-two thousand eight hundred thirty-six dollars sixty-four cents. Uh, we pumped out sixty-nine million eight hundred seventy-three thousand nine hundred nine gallons. And if I divide that out by roughly ninety-one days, it's, uh, seven hundred sixty-six thousand eight hundred forty-five gallons a day on average.
Is that, that just on the, on the plant side, or does that include the well?
No, that's the plant and the well.
Both?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, that, this is metered sales.
Right.
This is what's going through the meters.
Okay.
Um, water is going over the dam finally.
Right, thank God.
It's been a long time, so that is done. Um, again, I wanna get back on, um, what we had started, uh, with the reservoir, with, uh, chapter one ninety-five dash forty-four. Um, you know, curtailing activities on the reservoir, I'd like to see the board start moving on that. Um, I was also looking in the Village Code, we had, in chapter one eighty-seven, regards, references utility poles. And what, what I, what are known as ghost poles or phantom poles, secondary poles.
Yeah.
They put a new pole, the old pole sits next to it.
Yeah.
And it stays there. Um, we have, that's in our code, and I think it's time that we start, um, I don't know who that would fall under, whether it's the DPW or, or what, but I think we need to start. There's an awful lot of telephone poles out there, double poles, and the phone company and cable still have theirs on the old stuff. And they lop off the top twenty feet or whatever it is.
Right.
And they put a new pole in. Well, our code is pretty clear on that, so.
I think the phone company, in my history, the phone company has been my, my go-to. Uh, I would imagine, uh, would a letter work to the phone company directly?
You tilt, uh, the power company owns the poles.
PSC?
O and R owns the poles.
Oh, okay, why do I think it's the phone company?
I don't know, O and R. Well, whatever it is.
They won't take the poles down if the last thing is off of them.
Right.
There's poles that got, they're, have double poles that have been there for years.
Sometimes what the, the power company, out of sheer frustration or a threat from the community, will cut the pole and leave those two just dangling, and pull the old pole out, and the old stuff is just dangling on there and a little piece of, yeah. I've been in that mess, so.
Um, so we're not sure who owns the poles?
Well, you, i- i- if you look at the tag, that's, uh, that's O and R's tag.
Well, you know, the interesting thing, uh, I'll defer to Andy, knows more about that stuff. But, but I think the thing that's interesting is, back a whiles ago, you know, maybe when I just became mayor, uh, I seem to remember, for whatever reason, Scott, prior counsel, said to me, it's Frontier's problem because they don't take their stuff off the poles, and they're required, and I think what they call them, I've heard ghost poles, I've heard the, but there's something about that pole that they blame Frontier for. So I'm gonna call the O and R liaison.
Well, it's the delay, it's.
Give them a copy of our, our, our Village Code on it, and if they don't, you file a complaint with the Public Service Commission.
It's called a pole changeout, and each, each co- company would send out a crew to move it over to the new pole. So it's up to them to do that, each company. So, uh, power company is first, that's how you know that the power company set the pole, and it's their pole. And they immediately change over their power lines, next guy through is supposed to be the cable company, they're next in line coming down. And then the last is the phone company, because they're the first ones on the pole at the lowest level. So that's how they're supposed to do it.
Uh, you know what, I'm just gonna send you, I'm gonna send you a phone number.
Oh, that's what, yeah, like everything else.
It'll be my O and R liaison, and, uh, can you, just, uh, just pass that along, let her just take that number down. I don't wanna do it in the public.
Okay.
Well, I could say, it's just, I, I saw that in the code book, and I just thought it's something we might wanna start looking at, because there's quite a few.
Does it give a time period to switch it over?
Um, I had, you know what, I had it, and I can't find, I made a copy of it, I don't know what I did with it, but it's. Get the, the big binder in there, Andy, right in the one eighty-seven, it's pretty clear.
Okay.
Um.
I know when I ran.
The, the next thing I got, and that was something that we were looking up when we were doing our, um, regarding the, uh, parking situation in chapter forty-three. But in the agreement that was done, um, it was actually a local law that was done in, uh, nineteen seventy-eight, and then it was amended in, in, uh, in two thousand. Then it was amended again in, I think it was twenty-ten. Um, the commuter parking lot, where the old Ross Lumber and stuff was, that, according to parking permits and everything that was, uh, that was, uh, done back in the day, that's supposed to be a joint venture for the maintenance of that parking lot between the Village of Monroe and the Town of Monroe. So.
Maintenance or, or the, that there would be no fees?
No, it's, no, it's, um, I'll just find it here. The Village of Monroe and the Town of Monroe shall jointly maintain and operate specific permit parking areas herein after set forth. So, I mean, that's something, maybe the, maybe they're not aware of it. Um, uh, I think they should be made aware of it, because that should be a joint venture, anything we do with it. Maintain them, whether it's line striping, paving. Bringing it out there.
Okay.
You want that, or?
I'll take it.
Okay, and, um, I, I think that's all I got, I got one thing, if we, if we're going into executive session, uh, one thing to discuss in there.
I'm good.
Okay, uh, I need a, uh, counsel, do you have anything, uh, for open session?
No.
Uh, just, I just, uh, you guys, um, I filed, um, the defense of the building inspector in the WC Lincoln, and I filed an amended complaint in D and U.
Okay. Thank you on both counts. Okay, I need a motion to, uh, adjourn to executive session for the purposes of attorney-client and personnel.
Carl will make that.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Do I, aye, so carry, thank you.